Good afternoon and welcome to the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Prince George's County Public Schools Board of Education Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group. I sir, my name is Pamela Boozer Struther. I'm the District Three Board of Education member. And I serve as co-chair of this work group with parent volunteer Joseph Jakuta, representing the climate action parents of Prince George's County. We welcome all of our work group members, special guests and the viewers of of the meeting, and thank you for your dedication to this climate action work. You can review past recordings of meetings at www.pgcps.org backslash climate. Today we will be discussing the topic of bus school system fleet in school system fleet electrification and community health impacts. And I welcome all of our guests from PG CPS and organizations who will be you'll be hearing from today. I do want to note that in board docs where you see the agenda are, we do note a presentation from Highland. This will be delayed to a future meeting. I want to just take a moment of personal privilege before we start to give a thank you and a shout out to the Cool Spring Elementary School Community for their community schools event today. They invited Pepco, who brought free LED light bulbs, a really generous amount of light bulbs for families to take home and to use for electric electricity reduction in their own homes and some nice education sheets to explain how that impacts climate change. So it's wonderful to have partners like Pepco who who are in our working with our community schools coordinators, which we now have seventy-seven schools that are community schools. Next, I would like to ask for a motion for approval of today's agenda. If I could have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Extentions? All right. Thank you. The agenda is approved. I would now like a motion in a second for the meeting, meeting minutes from our November third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
I move the November third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting minutes.
Thank you so much.
The second motion.
Thanks. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Extentions? All right, great. Well, now I'll turn the meeting agenda over to Joseph Jakuta and Kate Colzoni for some announcements.
So. Joseph, if you don't mind. Um, so we're getting ready to kick off our subcommittee meetings. We've been, we're working hard right now to consolidate all the information, organize it and package it. So when we start our subcommittee, we can have a super efficient and standardized way to go through the information to prioritize it by topic and identify the what, the why and the how. So it can be put into the action plan potentially in just one meeting and maybe a couple, some online follow. So the information sources that we are using are going to be is the data call with the county, the meeting presentations and discussion survey results, the student forums and the PG climate action plan as a baseline. So if you have any suggestions or comments on the subcommittee process, stay tuned for additional information that will come out and feel free to reach out to board member Boozer Strutter or Joseph Jakuta with comments. The other quick thing I'll note is that we will need to be putting some photos in the action plan. So if you have some great photos, students, teachers, community members and just work group members generally by topic area, think about those and send them to David Smith with your photo credit and attribution so we can include those in the plan. And that's all I have, Joseph.
Thank you, Kate. I also want to mention that our next meeting is December first. We'll be discussing stormwater and land use issues in the schools. And that, of course, is at three thirty. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is I'm going back to what Kate said about the Prince George's County Climate Action Plan. I just wanted to remind everyone that they, that plan is out for public comment right now. And it is until December the first. So if you are so inclined, there is a very brief survey. I think it took me about five minutes to fill out, allowing you to provide feedback on the the climate action plan that would impact the essentially the rest of the county operations except the schools. And that's it. Any questions? Oh, actually, one other thing. They're also having public meetings. One of them is tonight. And that is in Clinton. There's another public meeting tonight, up tomorrow night up in Laurel, and then there's two other public meetings towards the end of the month that are online and all that information is also on that link I dropped, my pgc.us slash climate action plan. Okay, and I will turn it back to board member Boozer Strutter to get into the meat of things.
All right. Thank you so much, Kate and Joseph. And I just wanted to, I put it in the chat here, but I just want to say I want to welcome Asia Gray. I know she's calling in from college and I assume you're in, calling in from New York, right? So that's, we haven't seen you in a while, and I know you've been settling into college, but it's so wonderful to have have you back and to check, check back in and to continue to be part of the processes as part of the alumni representation from PG CPS. So today we are talking about bus electrification and and of course, other issues related to transportation and operations. And I did want to say, I think I've mentioned this before, but I'm saying again because of the relevance. When I was a, I'm a PG CPS parent of a Mount Rainier elementary student and some years ago, Ramon Palencia Calvo came to our PTO meeting and announced this opportunity for to fund electric buses for our school system, but we had to advocate, we had to get organized. And if we wanted some of this Volkswagen settlement funds, but it was going to be up to the parents because those funds could have been used for anything really at the time. And Ramon and his colleagues and advocates had the idea that let's focus the state on school buses. Let's focus on children and children's health. And I will never forget that moment because it's a real turning point for me. For one, connecting it to to everything that I do care about in the school system. But also that I just didn't have any faith that electric school buses were coming anytime soon. I just didn't feel like that was going to be a priority. And I I believe that the work of CHISP and the Coalition Partners have made a huge change. And we're, we're, you know, evidence of that, that we are, that we can have this work group and have faith that there is going to be change in the federal and state level of prioritizing. So with that, I'm going to turn the agenda over to Ramon and David Hill, who's a PG CPS Transportation Operations Supervisor to lead us through our conversations this afternoon. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, board member Boozer Strutter, and thank you for that introduction. So let me see if I can share my screen and provide a brief overview and then we can move along the conversation with the Department of Transportation and the American Council for an energy efficient economy with their presentations. Let me see if I can get this. Here we go. Am I sharing the screen now?
Yes.
All right. So so for those who, for those who might not be familiar with my organization, LCB, Maryland LCB, we are a statewide nonpartisan organization based in Annapolis. And we advocate for smart and effective environmental policies. But I'm also the director as board member was mentioning for CHISP Maryland, which is a key program of Maryland LCB that works with Latino communities to ensure we, we have a strong voice to protect our environment and health. And we do this through education and promoting long-term community participation and leadership development. Let me see. Oh, there you go. So we, back in two thousand and sixteen, we, you know, we worked with families and one of their main concern was air quality. And as you might know, asthma rates among Latino communities, it's higher than the average in the state and nationwide. So air quality and asthma was a big concern. And back then, we we realized, we saw that, you know, the Volkswagen came down cheating on their testing emission tests. And they were slap a big fine and Maryland is tend to receive over seventy million dollars to to mitigate, to reduce diesel emissions from the transportation, this transportation sector. And one of the things that came out of meetings with community members and with parents was, you know, that opportunity back then also electric school buses were were already reliable. There were a number of school districts doing pilot projects, testing electric school buses and the range were increasing exponentially reliability and all weather conditions and all that. So one of the things that we decided is the community decided is to advocate for that as the governor to really to really prioritize overburdened communities and our children and dedicate some of those funds to transitioning diesel to electric school buses. So that's when we launched the Clean Buses for Health and Inuse campaign. And again, to prioritize the health of of children, our children. Just and just to put this in perspective, this is a statewide campaign, but here in Prince George's County, this is some of the, some of the sides of the fleet, right? Over twelve hundred, almost thirteen hundred diesel buses, the white fleet, the the non-buses is four hundred and twenty-two vehicles. You know, for a school buses, the turnover rate is twelve years. So to put in context, in context, when you turn over a vehicle now, you're going to, you're locking in that technology for the next twelve years. And you can see the number, the consumption, the fuel consumption pre-coven in gallons. So we're talking about for us, that was, you know, and this is one county in the state of Maryland exponentially, those numbers. So it's, we're talking about a big fleet. So why, again, why electric school buses? You know, in terms of hell, I, I already alluded to that. Children's go back and forth school on diesel buses and he has diesel is one of the harm, one of the the types of pollution that harms humans the most. Asthma rates among non-white children and higher than their white counterparts. So it's an equity issue as well. In terms of climate mitigation, transportation emissions from the transportation sector in Maryland are the largest source of carbon emissions in the state. So this is a huge component of climate change. You know, in terms of saving back then and now, we see a study after study of the potential for savings in terms of fuel savings and maintenance. Let's remember that an electric school bus has far more components than a diesel, the diesel bus. And also, you know, it was a priority from parents and students. They really wanted a solution to this. And and I guess when we're thinking about these issues, transitioning one fleet to another from diesel to electric, there's benefits, direct benefits for community members, for students, for for some of the communities that host, you know, bus depot that can host, you know, a hundred plus diesel buses idling and whatnot. So we need to, you know, we need to think about equity. What does equity mean for the school district when transitioning to zero emission school fleets, right? How we, how do we define overburdened communities underserved? It does what we are trying to prioritize when deploying the buses, you know, that deployment, where are we gonna? What are we prioritizing? That is very important that we think to think about those things and and, you know, have a solid path forward. And also co-benefits, you know, if you can think of an electric school bus, it, that is a bus that you can move from your bus depot to a community during a heat wave to be a cooling center. You know, those batteries can be connected to a building or some other places agreed and, you know, during a power outage, just bring some power. So those are some of the co-benefits that, you know, great potential that need to be thought through. Have a plan. How are we prioritizing that? In terms of labor, another big thing, you know, how does the school district protect workers when transitioning to zero emission school fleets and new technology? You know, there are a number of drivers, minions, employees, contractors. How, how do we make sure that they're protected in this transition and not this place? So those, some of the issues that need to be thought thoroughly. So let's move forward. What's happening on the ground, right? So there's a, there's some opportunities over the past three, four years, besides the Volkswagen settlement fund, we have seen some, some initiatives, some legislative initiatives to bring forward, you know, to we saw some efforts to mandate across the board electrification of school buses. And now, last year, we had a, we had a bill, House Bill H thirty-two, that would establish an electric, establish a pilot program between utility companies, utility companies and the school districts to transition diesel to electric zero emissions school buses, right? This is a program that it consider fifty million dollars per utilities. So a total is total of four utilities, two hundred million dollars for this transition. And the way it will work is the school, the school district, I'm sorry, the, the utilities would pay rebates to a school district for the incremental cost to bring an electric school bus. And let's remember that electric school buses are the upfront causes sticker prices higher, two, three times higher than a, than a diesel, diesel school bus. And so that, that'd be part of that House Bill H eight thirty-two, and also the buses will be equipped with vehicle to create technology. So when the buses are not in use, they can be connected to the grid to, to provide that power back to the grid and not cost to the, to the school districts. The utility will have to replace that power and not cost to the utility. So that is, that is a bill that I was introduced last year and passed one of the chambers, but never got to a vote in the second chamber and there are plans to be reintroduced this year. So that's, that's one of the opportunities. Is is not a mandate. So it's an opting program. So doesn't mean that if it passes, school districts are obligated to join this program. It's not a mandate. So that's something that we see coming down at the state level. And but there are some also, you know, I alluded of the sticker price and you know, that's something that is realistic and in no way we think that, you know, this transition should take some of the funds that are committed to programs, buildings and other and other things to for this transition. But so there are some funding opportunities. You know, there's the EPA diesel emission reduction, added JIRA funds to transition to cleaner technologies that are, that has been, has been there for quite a while. You know, we just saw this week signed the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill that, that commits two point five billion dollars for electrification of, of a school buses and another two point five billion dollars for mute cleaner technologies for the school buses, including electric school buses. So it can be up to five billion dollars depending on what EPA at the end of the day decides to do with those extra two point five billion dollars and prioritize. You know, we have the Build Back Better Plan being discussed now at the federal level again, that is considering again up to five billion dollars for electrification of school buses. So those are great sources of of funding to support this transition. You know, the diesel emission, diesel emissions, the settlement, the Volkswagen settlement. The county already took advantage of that, but there's still some funds there that can be, you know, it can be brought to to transition those buses. So there's a number of opportunities with that. I guess what I want to say is that, you know, we have seen that this transition is not just, doesn't happen in the blink of an eye. It takes time, a lot of planning. But the sooner school districts are, you know, have that experience, are ready to transition, they'll be able to apply to take advantage of those opportunities that we see now coming down at a record level that we never seen before in in terms of billions of dollars. And yeah, with that, I want to turn you to, to the Department of Transportation, I believe, David.
Yes, I just wanted to add on that the future is here. Whoever would think that we would have electric school buses? You know, electric cars, electric school buses. The future is here and we all will have to start thinking about electric school buses. We have to think about the future and we have to be prepared to make changes. And this is the time for change. The president said that we need to move in this direction. And we all going to have to get on board with this. Some people don't believe in electric school buses or electric cars. But it's time for a change and we all have to move in that direction. Everyone here today on this call will have to think about electric school buses. Because the future is here. No matter how we think about it, the future is already here and we have to move in that direction. And we can't get behind the curve ball. We have to stay on top of this. We have to be proactive and we have to think about the future. So that's what I wanted to add at this time.
Thank you, David. And I think now we also are going to introduce our special guests from PG CPS. Today we have Dr. Rudolph Saunders, the Director of Transportation, Dr. Mark Fawcett, the Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Sharaskar Coleman, the Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, Mark Dresner, the Supervisor for the Central Garage Services. And I believe that is it as far as our special guest. And we wanted to have a hear, hear what is going on from transportation from PG CPS's perspective and so I will just turn it over, I guess, Dr. Saunders.
Yes. Good evening and thank you for having us here today. I guess I'll just start off with some very general things. We, as Mr. Hill has stated, we are well aware and have definitely been talking about this for some time. I will say that the timeline has, has, just a few years ago, this was kind of a idea, almost a novelty, and it has become a reality in a very short window of time. Luckily, there's been nothing but support around the idea that we need to start looking at ideas of how we can do this. You, you all have already done a great job of looking at this and stating some of the obvious barriers. Some have come down. There's lots of different people talking about very funding sources and, and as was stated, this is an issue of expense, but I don't think it's an option that we, you know, can't, won't find a way to make it happen. So as we try to balance, as we look at this, because we know that somewhere in, you know, ten to fifteen years' time, we hope that we're at a point where all of our vehicles are able to make this transition. So we're looking at the variables such as cost of vehicles, which is even in the three years we've talked about this, because as you stated, we did access some of the VW settlement funds. And when we got that first thing, to be honest, I said in terms of the county, okay, this is a drop in the bucket to what we need really, you know. But now that it's becoming a little more cost friendly, we're able to look at it a little differently. And just how will we fund it? You know, how will we look at the cost of vehicles? What will the practical use of electric vehicles be as the technology has gotten better? Looked at things like, okay, what areas can we use this on? Not so much because of the geographical, geographical concern of the county, but looking at our existing bus routes and the length of time a bus has to be out during the day, based on where it goes. For those that aren't aware, we currently run bus routes that may begin in Prince George's County, but we travel from one end of the county to the other. In some cases, we're out of the county into DC, Virginia, Baltimore, Annapolis, and even Frederick County. So when we started looking at things like the battery capacity and other variables, it kind of dictates what are the areas where we will be able to quickly make a change? What are the areas where, you know, as this happens, we would have to wait for technology to catch up with our needs? And then infrastructure, you know, with charging stations, the speed of charging and those types of things to be practical with with our operations as they are now. So we're, we're on board and I know you have some of other key members on this panel, such as our Central Garage Supervisor, who knows a lot more about the technical needs for that. But we, we have been talking with different vendors and they are moving at breakneck pace to try to come up with products. We have been able to see and even ride on a few electric buses when just a few years ago, nobody even had any production. So they're working on it. Things are getting better. We've heard presentations on anything from purchasing buses to leasing buses to even a company recently has given us a presentation how they can convert existing vehicles to become electric vehicles, which is interesting. I don't know if it's, you know, we, we, we got to see what it looks like in real practice. So we, we are open to a lot of different ideas to make this happen. And then I'll add as my last thing, the support is going to be critical from all of the political partners and everyone else, because there's going to be some different types of costs associated with this, especially initially. There's going to be some different things that happen with that as we try to make this transition and look at things like what are, what are the needs for contracting, for permitting? As we have to convert some of our existing areas for charging stations and other areas. So this group is great. We'll definitely be talking more with you hopefully in the future about where some of those hurdles may be in in help for your support in in trying to help us navigate that. So thank you. Maybe I should turn it over. I don't know who would be the next person with Dr. Fawcett or Dr. Coleman or whomever.
Yeah, I can just jump in and 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 really, thank you for having me today and I apologize for being a little tardy, but I knew my team would show up on time. But yeah, Dr. I think Dr. Saunders kind of summed up our view. I mean, we, we understand and Mr. Hill, you also, yeah, some of, I mean, you're a Dallas fan. I do listen to you sometimes. That we realize that the future is here, as Mr. Hill said, we realize that we need to get on board, but we also know that proper preparation for us is the key to making sure that, you know, we provide the services that we're, that we're able to provide. We understand and as Dr. Gold, Dr. Golds, we understand, she said it too, that the upfront costs, you know, seem exorbitant right now, but there are many avenues to help facilitate that cost. And also the, the long-term cost benefits with savings on fuel, savings on, you know, different things, especially what diesel fuel and emissions do to the environment. We do realize that the long-term savings, well, you know, are going to be great. And and while we want to be in the forefront on the, on the cutting edge and, 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 you know, and hopefully be one of the first systems to kind of convert our entire fleet, we have to do it responsibly. And and we're hoping that, that, you know, with the support from, I think, Mr. Calvo, I don't know if you remember me, he was one of the very first people who approached us about electrical, electric buses. And and we appreciate that he's still a stance advocate, you know, and making this happen. But, you know, it's come swift, but I think the, as they like to say, the political stream is there, you know, for us to get the support that we need and 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 we stand ready, you know, to move forward with converting our fleet to an all-electrical fleet as soon as possible. Because once again, we understand the benefits that that has in the long run and the cost savings that are in the long run, even though, you know, everybody looks at the upfront costs like, oh, and eyes get big. But, you know, in the long term, we, we know, we're in the business of what, preparing kids for the future. So why not make sure we do our part in helping to save the environment for our young people in the future? So thank you for having me today. Mr. Dresser, do you have anything from the, from being a forty-year veteran of a transportation fleet in Prince George's County?
So we will be introducing an electric school bus to Prince George's County Public Schools this year. This school year, I should say, it'll, the bus should be arriving in January. We do have a bus ordered. We were successful with the VW mitigation grant funding for one bus and charging station for that bus. So we, we will definitely be introduced, be introducing our first bus. I see this as a, as a major opportunity. But I do have some cautions that I'm going to put out there. Cost is certainly. Cost is certainly one of them because the cost of the electric bus or electric buses is currently two to three times even as high as four times as much as a diesel bus. And at the same time, what's of bigger concern is the facility infrastructure improvements that have to occur in order to support a fleet of electric school buses. We're in in many cases, when you look at the locations of our current bus lots, the age of our current bus lots, the power simply isn't even there at the bus lot. It will require a major upgrade by utility companies to bring our bus lots to a power suitable to bring to introduce electric school buses in in most locations. So the other thing to consider is the weight of the bus itself. Paving and different things like that asphalt is going to need to be a lot thicker. The weight of the bus is considerably more than the current bus. So there are some some facility upgrades that are going to definitely need to take place. And for me, that will be welcome to to get some of our bus lot facilities improved and upgraded to support the electric bus. But I I'm very much encouraged. We have we have had several electric school buses here at Prince George's County Public Schools. I see buses introduced their electric school bus here. Bluebird introduced their bus here and they also staged one of their buses here when they introduced it to the United States Congress. It was parked here at our Brown Station Road Facility and recharged prior to departing for Washington DC and returned and was here for about a week afterwards. So we're doing a lot of legwork on on electric buses and preparing to make sure we have a smooth transition. As Dr. Saunders stated, we have many buses that operate outside of our district. Those are buses that tend to run long distances. And there is a concern with the range, current current range of the electric bus. So I see us introducing electric and I see definite possibilities for a rather large percentage of our buses to be suitable, especially those local routes within the district for use as electric. And then those outside of the district will probably remain diesel until the range improves. But that that pretty much summarizes where where we've been. We've been looking at electric for several years along with other alternative fuel technologies. We we are always participating and getting information, gaining knowledge. And right now, at this time, electric seems to be the direction that that people are prepared to go in. And we're certainly prepared to do that too and introduce it here in Prince George's County.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Dr. Coleman and then after Dr. Coleman, we'll start doing questions if anyone wants to put raise their hand, we'll start a queue.
Thank you so much. This was a very comprehensive conversation. I think the only thing that I would add is the added consideration around additional licensure for some of our drivers. From what I understand, electric buses are equipped with air brakes and all of our drivers don't currently have that endorsement. We may be at about fifty percent. Also, there needs to be a consideration around training for the upgrade of the licenses of our employees. Secondly, is around the training for the maintenance of the buses. So we would need to provide comprehensive support for our central garage team so that they can maintain the electric buses once they come on on online.
Thank you. I guess first up, we have Donald Goldberg with a question.
Yes, hi, thank you, Donald Goldberg Climate Law and Policy Project. Great presentations, everybody. Thank you for the information. I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Dresser. It's my understanding that Montgomery County has committed to transitioning its entire school bus fleet in the next four years to electric buses. I am just wondering, you know, whether there are some distinctions between Prince George's Counties bus needs and Montgomery Counties that would make it more difficult for Prince George's to to make this a full transition in, you know, say, the next four or five years.
I'm somewhat familiar with Montgomery County's fleet, although I don't work for Montgomery County, but I am very familiar with their fleet. I do know that they have buses that operate outside of their district. And if if they're considering a complete one hundred percent changeover, battery technology would have to improve over what it is today in order to to be able to accomplish that.
So if I can tag on to assist with that response, we work very closely with our counterparts in Montgomery County. Because actually, as far as the state goes, we're the two closest in terms of size of the county as well as the number of routes we run. And we we definitely mirror each other. For example, when we did the VW grant submission, we worked on that together so we could kind of be in accord. Because we knew we would have to depend on each other for support. So as far as their transition, a little further ahead, because they do have some buses now. My understanding, at last we checked, is that they they definitely are in line with making that transition. I I think the four years is a bit aggressive. I don't, that's not my understanding. Because they're kind of phasing in. So they're where we are. For those that don't know, where we make a purchase or commitment of buses each year to keep with the twelve year cycle. And I think as they're transitioning new buses in, my understanding is a portion of them are electric and a portion are not until they get to the point capacity wise where they can start phasing in a complete one hundred percent each year. So I don't think they're going to be at a hundred percent electric in four years, but they definitely are going to be further ahead now. I think, for example, this year, my understanding is they took on about forty buses this year. They're working with an external partner that is allowing them to do that, which we are also considering that would help expedite this transition. So I will follow up with them to see if there have been any updates to that. But I think they want a slower pace, at least when we start talking about this to the full transition.
May I just say that, you know, just for clarification, I I actually read read that, I mean, I had read about their program. You know, a number of times, but I I came across that number yesterday, but I I I wouldn't vouch for it. You know, it certainly may not have been accurate. It's unfortunate that we couldn't get Highland to join us today because I think they would know the answer, actually. But I guess we'll find out soon enough if, you know, if not before, you know, then when we when we do meet with them. Thank you.
You're exactly right, because that's who they're working with in that. So they they might have some ideas. Yes.
Up next, Board Member Boozer Strather.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is really informative. I, you know, in the we've touched on some of the the bus lot and where the buses would be in past conversations, but haven't really gone in depth yet. I was, I'm interested in what you would imagine the future looks like about where buses reside on a daily basis. Do they do electric buses reside more distributed throughout the system? Are they charged at at schools that now have charging stations? And could this improve? Could this improve bus service if we don't? If electric also means a more distributed parking parking the buses situation. I especially what you said about the power coming into any one of these sites. And I I don't, you might want to describe a little bit about what a bus lot looks like. You know, you might want to explain how we pack these buses into a lot in Bladensburg. And and it's an old industrial parking lot, you know. So maybe you can explain what the what's the future where the buses, how they spend their day.
So that's a great question, and and I could probably sprout it into some places you don't want to go tonight. But I think it's important to point out, this would probably not be in addition to the buses we have, this would be instead of. So we would be, as we replenish the buses, because we do have to transition a number of buses out each year, we would probably be replacing them with electric buses and they would go pretty much to the spots where we're moving those buses out of in many cases. We have twelve bus lots throughout the county. Some are in much better shape than others. Some are on property that we own, some on property that we don't quite own yet. And we would probably be using that as an avenue to say, okay, let's look at areas where we're developing or or improving upon things so that we can use that to start working on charging stations first and, you know, the infrastructure types of things. But based on that, we would probably park in those buses very similar to the manner that we park our existing buses and fleet. Now, how we assign them is what might be different, what types of routes. So every bus lot has some routes that are just very local, that just go from a comprehensive school to its neighborhood to some that are longer routes, like the non-public schools and and out of counties. So that's kind of where the the variation would be. But we hope to tie this into our request for some improvement of infrastructure. This will be later, talk about the need for, you know, better bus lots, garages and depots and land that we hope to acquire that we've been struggling to find space for. But I think all that ties in together to kind of make this a better sale, you know. Because we're definitely, we're we're planning that into part of this, you know. We have some areas, for example, that are adjacent to schools, so that might be a little easier in some cases than some that are more remotely located. So I hope that answers that.
Yeah, that that's helpful. So what I think really what you're saying is that lots are here to stay. So if we make investments in in lots, it's a good investment because the electrification isn't going to to make lots disappear. It doesn't mean the buses are going to park closer because, you know, of course, because of this battery life and amount of miles is why I'm thinking about that. Yes, that's very, very helpful.
Our lots are at least going to stay. Maybe we'll be expanding them or maybe hopefully we'll add more in the future years. But it's it's dependent upon the improvements that we needed to do anyway. You know, there are many things that we need to do just in terms of the ground and and, you know, pavement issues that we were going to hopefully address. And while we're doing that, that's a great opportunity to start looking at his, you know, can we run charging stations and now to get ready for this? One of the things about working with some of the vendors we've talked about is they have plans to help with the transition by adding those things. So we we'd like to kind of package all that together as we make those improvements, looking at the areas where we do not have existing garages in terms of a building, where as we add that, that becomes something we can look at in terms of the space needed and equipment and materials that we're going to have to have for this transition. So I think there's a lot of forward thinking that has to go into this. And that's certainly a part of everything now that we're talking about. I will tell you that our our current, we we currently are looking at building a garage at one of our locations at the Mulliken Bus Lot. And that is certainly, since we know that's coming up soon, where we plan to put some of the first charging stations, since we're already doing some construction there.
And let me jump in real quick, Dr. Saunders, because, you know, Mulliken, where we we're getting ready to build the depot. We do already have a garage there, a newer garage, but we're going to build the depot and add some charger stations. But the other thing we're doing, Board Member Boozer Strather and and the other people on this call is that, for instance, our new blueprint for schools, which is the P three that we've invested in, we are, we're building schools now with infrastructure that are going to be able to house charger stations. So whereas we have not, you know, actually, we're going to put up the charger stations yet. But we we will be able to very soon after when we need them, because we're going to build all new schools with that infrastructure so that they're ready to support charger stations. So that's just something else that we're doing from the capital side. Dr. Saunders did did hint on the fact that as we seek to improve lots or and 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 the Board Member Boozer Strather, you mentioned Bladensburg. Bladensburg is probably a lot that we know that we won't be able to keep based on the size and based on our vision for our future bus lots, you know, in terms of having the the garages and the depots and the charger stations, you know, because it's going to take much more physical space for us to build the type of infrastructure to support the bus lots that we'll need in the future. So we're we're well aware of the 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 foresight that we have to have as as we build new bus lot structures and as we build schools, quite frankly. Because, you know, if a school, they they have, you know, dead deadhead time, they have waiting time. And, you know, if they can hook up and charge, you know, that that would help in the overall delivery of service in terms of, you know, the 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 distance that our buses, you know, have to go throughout the day. So I just want to kind of throw that in there.
Thank you. I think Mr. Dresser Dresser, you're up next.
Thank you. Just just wanted to add a little bit to the response for Mr. Goldberg regarding Montgomery County and a one hundred percent electric school bus fleet. I believe it is in them working with Highland Electric, they're introducing, as Dr. Dr. Saunders mentioned, upwards of forty buses year one, and they're they're adding annually a percentage of electric buses. In year four, they're talking about a hundred percent of the buses they purchase in year four being electric, but not their entire fleet. Montgomery County's fleet is comparable to ours between twelve and thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred and fifty. So that's that's a very large number. They'd be replacing two hundred, two hundred and fifty buses, three hundred buses a year to get to a hundred percent by year four. But I do believe it was a hundred percent electric purchase in year four. So if they
That actually makes
If they buy
Much more sense.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, I was going to say that, that actually, your explanation makes makes sense. What I said, when you think about it, really doesn't, yeah, they couldn't possibly turn or replace their entire fleet in four years. So I apologize for my misleading comment. Question.
Thank you for the clarification there. And we we probably shouldn't move on soon, but I'm going to ask one last question. And that was, what percentage of the current bus routes that you have, do you think are capable of being covered by the buses with the current technology?
That's going to be hard to answer, and I'll tell you why. If our routes were running as normal, I'd say we we probably could run over half, at least half, not more. But right now, because of our shortage, most of our drivers are doing their regular route, plus picking up another route. So from the point they leave, they may be out, you know, on the road for a significant amount of time and mileage before they get back. So I'd have to really look at that to give you a better answer as to how many would based on the data we have, which says it can go about a hundred miles on a charge. We'd have to look at how many buses are traveling more than that in actuality. I can tell you, we have already four hundred or more routes that are already designed to be out the county every day. So we know those would probably not be our first candidates. But I'd have to look at the other five to six hundred to kind of determine how many of them would still need that time. And it's also going to depend on the recharge time. You know, right now, you know, if you did say the morning route and you could charge and be fully back in an hour, we we'd have a better accounting of that. But I don't know right now that the technology is there for the fast chargers on all of them.
Thank you. And Mark?
Sure. So the the manufacturers right now, the range is about a hundred and twenty five miles. And that's that's coming from Bluebird. Right now, I think the manufacturer with the greatest distance is roughly just a little over two hundred miles. Now, keep in mind that the entire bus is operating on electric. So when you turn on the air conditioning in the summer, you're diminishing on your mileage range. If you turn on the heat in the winter, you're diminishing on your mileage range. Lighting, virtually everything, windshield wipers. Everything is powered by electric, so that range may may be reduced depending on the type of routes, type of weather conditions, whether the bus is fully loaded or not. Those those will all impact on our ability to identify routes. But what we will do is focus primarily on local routes to make sure that we're within the range. And unlike the diesel buses that are fueled every other day, the electric buses will be fueled every night because when you come in, you plug it in. So that that's that's something to consider too. As as far as the service that's required to charge an electric bus, at minimum, you require a fifty at minimum, you require a 50 amp service. So just to put that in perspective, that would be like the electric dryer in your house, 200, over 220 volts. Um, just for one charging station for a bus. So if you're talking about having upwards of 50 to 100 buses on a parking lot, that's a major, major, major upgrade to the uh, power uh, source to coming into the bus lot. Which presently is about equivalent. Uh, most of our bus lots are operating just a little above residential service. We, we have temporary buildings, we have some uh, uh, that the mechanics use, that the bus drivers use, uh, there's a fueling station there. And what's presently there is just a little bit over residential service. Uh, so it's, it's going to require a major upgrade.
Well, thank you for all, all of the answers, but uh, we should move on to our next topic since we only have about 30 minutes, a little less than, yeah, about 25 minutes left. So, uh, Ramona, I think we're going to introduce our guest from ACE Triple E.
Yes, thank you so much. And just to back up a little bit, um, if you guys, if you all remember at the beginning of the work group conversations, when we were talking about priorities and values that would guide uh, our plan, one of the things that bubble up, one of the values was, was health and improving, you know, how can by transitioning to a zero, uh, net zero school district, we can improve the health outcome for students, teachers, communities? So I think that the next presentation, it's on point on that, touching on that, how, how electric school buses are also a vehicle to improve the health of, of children. So let me introduce Christine. She's with the American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy and, uh, and Abby, and please take it away.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen quickly. All right. Yeah. Thank you so much for having us. Uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Um, are you all able to see my presentation? Oh.
Not yet.
Sorry. Yeah. Right. So, uh, my name is Christine Gerbode. I'm on the Health and Environment Team at ACE Triple E. And, uh, Dr. Abby Mersky is a researcher for the Transportation Program. Uh, we've been working together on some analysis to try to better understand the climate and health benefits of transitioning a school bus fleet to electric vehicles. And I'm going to walk through some of the big picture about what happens to emissions when we do that. And how we could use that to better understand what the impacts of this would be in PG County. So this is going to be a pretty broad analysis for today. Uh, we can definitely take questions at the end if there's time or we're happy to follow up by email. Um, and we'd actually love to hear from you all, what kinds of information might be most useful to have on this topic for PG County? Uh, because we are working to produce some web resources that we hope will help aid the conversations around um, health and environment and this topic, uh, which we'll be happy to make those available when they're complete, hopefully early in the year. So keep that in mind as, as we go today. Um, just quickly, for those of you that haven't connected with us before, we're from the American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy. Um, we're a research nonprofit that's focused on catalyzing energy efficiency across a range of sectors of the economy and different policy levels. So before we look, dig into looking at how transitioning to EVs changes the pollution story, let's just quickly talk about what kind of health impacts we're talking about when we talk about exposure to diesel pollution. Uh, so exhaust from diesel vehicles like school buses is known to cause or make worse health conditions related to the respiratory system, the cardiovascular system. We're talking about lung inflammation, cancers, uh, increased heart attack and stroke and more. Uh, for kids in particular, we're concerned about increases in conditions like asthma, um, as well as impacts to developing lungs, hearts and brains. And there are also concerns related to reproductive health. Um, overall, we're looking at this broad range of, you know, negative impacts to quality of life, uh, loss productivity, so lost days of work in school because of disease symptoms and potentially early death. Um, but health is about even more than just, you know, what happens in the hospital or in the home. Uh, we're also, when we think about health, my team is thinking about climate change as well, which is a major public health threat because it's, it's got uh, major health, health implications. Uh, so we're really excited to see this working group committed to addressing it. Um, just as a resource, we'll probably add a few more resources before we share the slides, but um, just some literature on uh, the kinds of impacts that are related to diesel buses in particular. Um, so when we transition from a diesel fleet to an EV fleet and think about what the pollution profile of this change looks like, we're changing the amount, the type and the location of pollution. Um, so we're reducing some kinds of emissions and we're also adding new emissions to the power grid. Um, as, as new demand comes from the bus, uh, bus replacement. So overall, we're, we're shifting some emissions from tailpipes and neighborhoods to power plants, smoke stacks. Um, now health risk from particulate matter and other diesel exhaust is related to not just the amount of pollution, but also how likely that pollution is to reach people at concentrations that can do harm. So the amount of pollution itself is not the only concern. Uh, the amount of pollution that is actually breathed in is a really vital determinant of the risk to health um, from that pollution. So all else being equal, um, pollution that is breathed in is going to decrease with the distance from the source of that pollution. And what this means is that to understand likely health impacts from this change, we have to think about population density. And about the distance of that population from the source of emissions. So tailpipe exhaust from a diesel bus is going to be concentrated at ground level around schools and long routes. Uh, many of this will be through residential neighborhoods. We'll talk about that in a little more detail in a minute. And then these buses are going to be funneling towards dense areas where most of the schools are going to be located um, in, in most, most areas. So population density around power plants is often far lower than long bus routes. And it's also important to note that the grid is getting cleaner over time, uh, so meaning that the impacts coming from power emissions are going to be getting smaller as we move towards 100% cleaner energy, uh, clean energy future. So again, total emissions matter, um, and it's, but it's not acceptable to ignore the human geography of those emissions. And so ignoring or improperly counting the realities of exposure are going to lead to inaccuracies in trying to estimate the harm caused by this exposure or avoided by um, uh, reducing it. So it is also, again, just to reiterate, like the transition here is also opening the door to a future where buses are powered by a much cleaner grid with even lower total impacts. So this map hopefully will help you have a sense of what this kind of pollution shift looks like for uh, PG County's bus fleet in particular. Um, so when we talk about the need for new electricity generation, it's important to remember that power isn't generated right next door to where it's used. It's that generation is going to be spread across a large area of the grid. Um, so all these tiny red specks um, represent power plants. Um, where CO2 emissions, in this case, we're looking at CO2 as one of the pollutants that we're talking about here. Um, where CO2 emissions are expected to be shifted if, for example, the entire bus fleet were electrified tomorrow. Um, and then comparing that to the size of this large red dot right over PG County, which represents this, the volume of CO2 um, coming from diesel tailpipes uh, over the same period of time. So like I said, when we, earlier, when we transitioned to EVs, pollution impact is going to depend on how clean the power grid is. And as that grid gets cleaner, the impact of the new power demand is going to decrease. Let's zoom in for a second on a couple of these power plants. Let's see what that looks like up close in terms of human impacts. Um, so for example, these are over here, the three uh, so radius is drawn around the three power plants in PG County that show up as potentially increasing uh, in emissions um, from some of our early analysis. And we looked at population density within a half a mile of these plants, which is it also, uh, it also, uh, less than 250 people per square mile and less than 50 people per square mile in two of those three, uh, the two down here that we've zoomed in on. Um, looking at the broader area of our analysis, so that previous map showing all the power plants across the Mid-Atlantic region. Um, the average density around these power plants at that half mile radius is about 10 times less than, for example, the average uh, density across Prince George County. Um, so here's the county shown two ways. Both of these have the service territories for all of the county's elementary schools outlined. Um, and just as examples, um, I didn't want to use all, all the tool types, but um, so the schools are marked in orange and the bus lots that we were discussing earlier are marked as red squares, just to give you a sense of how those are distributed. So, uh, overall, Prince George County is about 10 times as densely populated as the area we were just describing near those power plants that are likely to see new generation. But as we focus in on the areas that are likely to see most diesel emissions, um, we're going to see that average density is even higher there. Uh, so uh, the, the approximate population density within um, the elementary school zones themselves, territories, is shown here on the map on the right. Uh, and you can see that that's not evenly distributed across the county. You can also see that you know, in, in generally speaking, most of the schools are going to be, which intuitively makes sense, um, you know, concentrated in these denser areas. And then moreover, so buses are going to be reducing emissions, um, at, at schools where they're dropping people off at, at bus lots as they're leaving and parking and idling, but um, they're also going to be distributing most of their emissions along the routes that they're actually driving. So uh, Dr. Saunders flagged earlier in the session that PG County's bus routes run all over the county and into the surrounding areas. So obviously we'll defer to him on the specifics, uh, because we have not had a chance to look at actual route data from PG County. Uh, but as a general rule, uh, we'd expect to see more bus traffic in denser areas because buses have a limited number of seats, so more buses are needed in areas with higher population density where you're likely to have more students. Uh, most schools are also, like we said a minute ago, in this denser parts of the county, the buses are going to be funneling students to these areas to converge on schools to drop off riders. Um, so here is um, you know, close up look at one of these denser areas. And I think that actually happens to be that lot at uh, Bladensburg, I mentioned a minute ago. Um, and just looking at the population density by census block, which is the most granular um, uh, of the census units. Um, some of these areas are vastly more dense than the rest of the county. And so, uh, it's just sort of an example of um, if, if these are the places where the county, uh, places in the county where diesel emissions are converging, we're increasing more total health risk, um, than if we, if we're running emissions close to these zones than if we were talking about spreading the same amount of emissions out evenly over that county and that county's density. So, uh, so we, we really love to be able to get real route data in some of the areas that we've been uh, looking at this in. I mean, now it can be a challenge for all sorts of reasons, but it's definitely something we're interested in. Um, but then finally, and this is maybe the, you know, one of the, the key points here, uh, the picture of what emissions concentration looks like is most stark inside the buses themselves. So bus riders are breathing in some of their own buses' tailpipe emissions. Um, and emissions concentrations inside school buses have been shown to be four times higher than levels outside of the bus. And this exposure is estimated cause up to nearly 50 cases of cancer per million students more than would otherwise be expected. Uh, so this is having a direct impact on the bus riders in a way that once you transition to EVs, that concentrated exposure is gone because you don't have that kind of emission happening on the bus, uh, on an electric bus. So unfortunately, these kinds of emissions are some of the hardest to capture in a bulk analysis, uh, looking across a whole county or a whole region um, to try to understand and estimate these types of health impacts. Um, so and often this kind of analysis, the, this difference in density and difference in the distribution of emissions is really hard to capture, so it gets ignored. But what we can say from this is that diesel buses are going to be doing more harm than you would expect from just looking at the volume of these emissions. Uh, just because of how those emissions are distributed geographically. Um, and then it's, this is also, um, you know, a great moment for Maryland to be talking about transitioning in this way, um, because the power grid, um, that is, sorry, the, um, right, the, you know, the targets for the states to reach clean energy, um, like 100% clean energy by 2040 are, you know, ambitious and, you know, will help ensure that the emissions that are being moved to the grid are falling rapidly. Um, so I will say that, um, so we focused on a pretty narrow aspect of this question today, but there's obviously a lot of other important questions to consider and and other types of work that we'd love to be able to do. Um, one thing we'd love is, like I mentioned, is to be able to look at what these emissions changes look like when we actually analyze proximity to real bus routes. Um, we're in line, uh, we'd be able to ideally use this finer grain data to quantify that differential exposure, um, at different areas to say something more concrete about um, the scale of benefits involved. And then, uh, from that, we'd love to be able to um, monetize those health impacts, which is sometimes useful to basically have a comparable value to show um, potential avoided health impacts. Uh, when you're talking about, you know, planning decisions. So and like I mentioned earlier, we're currently producing a, a web resource that, uh, we're going to be using interactive maps to help aid discussion on this topic. And we'd love your feedback, um, either now or by email on what kinds of information might be most useful to include um, for a group like this. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions and um, thank you again for having us.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Gerbode. I think we have probably time for one, maybe two questions tops. So if anyone wants to hurry up and raise their hand.
We're also happy to follow up, uh, by email later, not soon.
Okay, uh, board member Boothe Strutter.
Uh, well, I didn't see any other hands, so I'm gonna jump in and just thank you so much. I mean, this, you know, the, your organization can take the time to produce this data is, uh, we really appreciate it. And I mean, it is something that I think, you know, we've talked about giving thoughtful consideration to how to deploy buses and including health impact is one of those factors when we are at that point where, where we can make those decisions. So I really appreciated the other thing I wanted to note while we didn't add someone to speak to this directly is there's been a shift in culture of our walkable school communities where you see a lot of that density, that some of those school communities are zero bus. Like I think Heightsville Elementary is officially a zero bus school. However, however, you got the cars line, you got the parents driving. So we have this other aspect of the work to do. You know, it's not just the buses, it's this shift that happened around walking to school, safety of walking to school. So I was wondering, are you tracking? Do you track that data as well? This shift of parents driving to school in walkable communities?
I, I don't think that that's something we've had a chance to, to look into yet, although it is an important part of that story. Um, I don't know if Dr. Mersky has had any experience with that, but yeah, unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to dig into that, but I definitely would love to follow up maybe and, and, um, you know, especially learn a bit more about the, uh, the zero bus schools.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, to note, I mean, really to our work group that even though we didn't have someone present, if we're really talking about this aspect, we, that will be in our plan at some level around the fact that we have to return, that our walkable schools need to really be wa- walking and um, and reducing all emissions for our students and staff. So thank, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think Delegate Lehman had a, had her hand up.
Looks like she may have froze.
I guess it, in that case, uh, sh- should we close out for the day, uh, since we only have about five minutes left? How do you want to approach that, board member? You're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, and I see Donald Bells raised his hand.
Yes, I, I just had a question. Uh, really appreciate the, the, all of the presentations today. Um, when looking at that, that health impact, uh, and all, all of the calculations and maps, um, are, are the, the, the amount of time that buses may spend idling factored in as well as, I guess, like the distance associated with the routes um, as well when making those calculations?
Um, that's something we have, um, actually, I think, um, Dr. Mersky might want to answer that one, but, um, if he wants to jump in here.
Yeah, so idling is a question that we would like to handle along this. Um, there, we do have data on idling or for buses in general, not for PG, but that's not separated from idling at stops versus idling at a red light or stop sign. We expect that the idling is going to increase the share of emissions that are in, that are in neighborhoods near people's houses themselves. And that is if we have more information about how many stops there are and if we have more information about how many stops there are and how long they have to stop or how many students, those are questions we can answer, although we do understand that some of those might be sensitive to share.
Yes, thank you. And, and even idling right at, at the school site, uh, when students are passing, you mentioned, you know, uh, the, the exhaust from their own bus, but walking past, right, other buses, uh, even going into the school. So, uh, appreciate that.
And, and we're happy to, like I said, follow up, um, and we'll reach out to share our slides as well, um. So, yes, thank you for having us.
No problem. And I, I'm sure everyone will have more questions. I know there was, there were already questions we didn't get answered today, but we'll make sure that they get distributed um, before the end of our, um, fact finding, uh, to everyone that needs to answer, but I guess we should bring this to a close. Board member Boothe Struther?
Yeah, that, oh my gosh, time flew. I really, I still had some questions as well. I know I have a feeling, um, you know, to our, uh, PG CPS team. Uh, I know I have some questions that I'd like to follow up on our fleet of, you know, I saw Don posted it too, around the fleet of maintenance vehicles and other vehicles in the transition there. We will need for, you know, our final planning. So that would be an area that, to expect. And, um, I just want to, you know, to A C Triple E, thank you so much for the health impact information. I think we always need to make sure we're getting, you know, that climate change is big, but when we're making local decisions, the impact on our own, specifically of our own, our own children is very motivating. And to be able to share more data with the community is just going to help us get more advocates to get the funding for this. So I really appreciate it. And so I just want to thank our work group members where this is our second to last topic missionary area meeting and in, on December 1st, Marita Roos will be leading us on stormwater management and trees. And then at that point, we are looking at getting ready to, to write a plan. So thank you all so much, uh, for all of your commitment and I look forward to seeing you on December 1st. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.